Thank you, Michelle. I'll go ahead and call this Tuesday, February 16th, 2021 of the Whitefish City Council. We are meeting remotely via WebEx. So thank you to the public members that took time tonight to call in and participate in our meeting. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and we voted earlier informally, and we selected Ben Davis to lead us in the pledge this evening.
Okay, let's do that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Ben. We will move on to communications from the public. If you are here to speak on our one and only public hearing, which will be, I believe, Resolution 21-05 regarding registration fees for dangerous dogs, I would just ask that you hold your comment until I call that specific hearing, but if there's anything you would like to bring to the attention of the council, now would be your opportunity. I'm going to allow or let, ask Michelle to take public comment this evening, and just for the record, your name and address when you are acknowledged. Thank you very much, Michelle.
Okay, so if you're just joining the meeting, if you hover or if you click the Participants button down at the lower right-hand corner of your screen, the lists will pop up. Find your name, hover over it, and you should find the hand icon. Go ahead and click that hand icon, and it will show that your hand is raised. If you are attending by phone, if you hit star three on your phone pad, that will also raise your hand. You can click the three buttons at the bottom of your screen to the left of the red X. That also gives you an option. And then if you don't have any of those options and you're having difficulties, you can click the chat button that's at the bottom right-hand corner of your screen, type your question, and hit Enter, and it will come over to me. Also, if you're having trouble with your microphone, you can test your microphone with your audio and video at the top of the page where it says Audio and Video, and then click down to where it says, um, microphone and speakers, and you can test your speakers there. So right now, we do have Benjamin Wait, who would like to speak. So Benjamin, you can have the floor.
Hi. Um, am I being heard?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I live at 938 Edgewood Place, which is east of Texas Avenue. And I'm here today to, um, say that I love everything that's being proposed with the sidewalk, the streetlights, the curb. I think it's a magnificent thing to put in for, for this street. There's a lot of people on this street that walk to town, and it's hard to cross the street or access that, um, bike path on the opposite side. So I think this would be an awesome thing. However, um, being that I'm east of Texas, and it doesn't include, uh, Texas or the residents hereof, I think that we should also be included to the county line, um, the extension of that sidewalk, just to permit, um, uh, safe passage to, to downtown, um, so that we can walk to a crosswalk and then get to that bike path and, uh, proceed on to up and over the viaduct. Um, I think a lot of people, um, would agree that, and especially even Brandon, who has been out here, um, surveying, when, when a vehicle's on the road and a human being's on the road, it's scary enough. But when there's two cars going both directions and a human, especially with a dog, I'm a dog owner, and I do walk my dog, um, it becomes really scary. And I understand people have the right of way, but if you get hit by a car, what does it really matter at that point? Um, but you have to step off the road, and then there's nothing there but a ditch. So it's very compromising, um, to proceed. Uh, I'm just stating that, um, I love everything about everything that's going on with the project. I just would like it to be extended to the county line, to include all the members of Whitefish and, um, Edgewood, Edgewood Place.
Thanks, Benjamin. Appreciate your comments tonight. Thanks for participating and calling in.
Thank you.
Okay, David Martin, you can unmute your mic, and you have the floor.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Uh, so I too am speaking to Agenda Item Number Seven, the Texas and Edgewood Reconstruction. Uh, I have a couple of comments, uh, mostly about process.
Yeah, just for the record address, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry, of course. My name is David Martin. I live at 816 Texas Avenue. So I'm not particularly part of the Edgewood, uh, discussion remotely, I guess. But I'm, again, I would like to address the, the process because it's presumably the same process that we use when it comes time for Texas. Um, first, I'd like to commend Craig and Brandon for their public outreach. They run great Zoom meetings, and they sacrifice their evenings to conduct those meetings after normal business hours when people could attend. Um, however, uh, let's talk about the process. The residents' input to the plan has thus far been limited to ideas and suggestions. There are limited times when you, the council, have an opportunity to understand and approve the plan. At each step where you approve, the ramifications should be clearly understood. This plan, as currently published, does not reveal to you many of the suggestions that, you know, have come up that could ameliorate the negative effects of the, of the reconstruction. So here's an example. At one public input meeting, it was discussed how a higher pitch grade on the north with some erosion control plantings would reduce the width of the impacted area. It's, uh, it's, it's shown on page 15 of this report, uh, labeled with and without sidewalk. Um, it was further suggested that the higher pitch in combination with a meandering bike path could avoid cutting down most, if not all, of the willow trees, retaining a measure of the rural feel to the road. That was not mentioned in this recommendation to you. What is said here is, quoting from paragraph six of the, of the section labeled current plan, says, "Multiple mature trees in the right of way will need to be removed regardless of what option is selected, and a landscaping plan will be completed to replace many trees upon completion of construction." So what happened with those ideas? You know, there's not a word regarding any attempt to save the mature trees instead of replacing them with, with young lollipop suburban-type trees, um, uh, after the construction. So I'd like to note here that there are eight mature willow trees on Edgewood Place. I measured the circumference of the westernmost one. It's circumference, and, and it's the largest. Its circumference is 132 inches. If you go to treeguide.com on the internet and use their tree age calculator, it states that that tree is approximately 120 years old. So most importantly, and here's, here's the bottom line, when you, the city council, are at the next and final approval gate to issue an RFP, and the details come out at that point that they have a low pitch grade, a straight path for the bike path, and cut down all the willow trees, will it be too late then because this plan did not make mention of the alternate possibilities? I, you know, I, I think the public should fear this scenario where this is the recommended thing, but a lot of the other ideas that have come up during these various different public input meetings are not mentioned, and you all have no insight into them. I don't think you've participated in these, in these, uh, public input meetings. So you, you don't know what has been suggested, and it just occurs to me, I don't want to get into a situation where, oh, it's too late to bring that up now. We've already, we already approved of this plan here, and we're not accepting any more, you know, detailed inputs. So I, I, I just hope that, you know, when we come down to the detailed plan, it's not too late to get some, um, uh, comments in and, and affect the, uh, the entire plan. This plan may be good as it stands, but it doesn't, um, give us enough detail or, and enough of the options that seem to be open that, that I fear if they're ignored in the next, uh, detailed section, and then we are told that we're too late to make those inputs. So anyhow, thank you for your time. Uh, thank you for, um, uh, your, um, uh, letting me speak. And I just hope the processes, that you're very careful with this process. I think it can be improved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments tonight.
Mark Nydig, you can unmute your mic?
You able to hear me?
Yes. Name and your address, please. You're muted again, sorry.
There we go. So Mark Nydig, 716 Edgewood Place. I'm positioned, uh, between Colorado and Texas, and my comments are on that proposal. Uh, I certainly am in support of improving the stormwater management, the efforts to reduce kind of lane size to control speeds. Uh, speeds are, are a problem on this section of road, and to resolve the safety issues at the Edgewood Place crosswalk. It's probably the most dangerous crosswalk in, in Whitefish. Uh, what I really struggle with is the proposal to put a sidewalk and boulevard on the north side of Edgewood Place. Um, I understand that the city has design standards, but I think not everything is appropriate for all areas, and I hope that's something that gets looked at. Um, when we look at this area, you know, it is, my house is the oldest house in this section. It was built in 1938. There is a historic rural character to this section of road, uh, and part of the contributing factors to that are large mature trees, uh, and large privacy trees as well. Um, this is a tree-lined area, and it's not one or two or a few mature trees that are going to be lost. It's going to be significant. Uh, and there, some of those are close to 100 years old, spruce, willow, and then the privacy trees. Um, but if we're removing this and putting in kind of a manicured lawn and a sidewalk, um, the, the impacts of that are significant because this isn't a quaint little section of neighborhood. Um, if I lose these trees and my neighbors' trees, then I'm now exposed to a busy road. Um, I now have unfettered views of the viaduct. Um, you know, I've got trains now that are just going to be right there. Uh, you're now pedestrians and bikers are going to be within 20 feet of my front door. Um, you know, I think my, my, my house in particular is closely set towards Edgewood Place. And ironically, I'm also going to get views of the pedestrian and bike path on the south side of Edgewood Place. Um, and that's the part that really kind of I struggle with is because there is a bike path that picks up from across my property 20 feet beyond Edgewood Place, and there's access points. Um, and there is a redundancy of function there. Uh, it seems like that is, that bike path is appropriate for the area. It goes through wooded natural landscape, provides the same function. Uh, there are four access points, uh, that both from Texas, uh, at Colorado, and then, of course, at other locations. Um, there's an access point across the mine that services the three properties right here. Um, and, you know, it's just really hard when I look at the financial implications of putting in a sidewalk like this, uh, both short and long term. I think when we look at the maintenance requirements for the city, but also for residents, um, there are expectations that are going to come with this for us. Uh, the, the challenges and changes to the historic rural landscape that will never be recouped. Uh, that's going to be lost forever. Um, and then certainly the redundant function, which is there's a bike path just on the south side that provides biking and pedestrian travel between all those points. I guess when I look at all of that and understanding the huge impacts to the livability of, for those of us who live on this street, it just seems that we could look at other alternatives, um, particularly on the west side of the section of road, because that's the most heavily forested. Um, but it seems like we could just look at how we could improve utilization of the existing bike path and pedestrian path without all of these negative consequences. Uh, so that's really my comments, my thoughts. I'm in strong opposition of the sidewalk and boulevard component. It just doesn't seem like it suits this area, and the purpose is addressed by an existing path. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate your time tonight.
Tim Strand, if you would like to unmute your mic, please state your name and address. You have the floor.
Um, I'm Tim Strand's wife, but it's his computer. He lets me use it. Anyway, my name is Suki Furman. I live at 937 Denver Street, and, oh, we often use Texas to get to our house. We either have to go down Denver from, uh, Wisconsin or, uh, down, uh, Edgewood. There are several points I'd like to make. One, I totally agree with, um, Mr. Martin and with Mr. Nydig. I was totally opposed to having the bike path on the north side of the road, the sidewalk, because I do feel it's a waste of money, and it is redundant. Um, I was told by the planners in the meeting that, oh, yes, we need to have access kind of for everybody. Well, you know, everybody doesn't move to a rural area so they can have access to a sidewalk. Um, then I was told that, oh, it's for school safety program. Again, this is a rural entrance. About, um, two and a half years ago, your staffman member, Hillary Lynn, had a meeting about Highway 93 and the entrance into Whitefish. At one point, she was seeking comments, um, and one of them was, what did residents want to see when they entered their town? What did they want it to look like? Nowhere during these discussions that I have participated in has anyone ever said, what do we want Whitefish to look like coming from Columbia Falls? Because of that, I'm in agreement with not cutting down those big old trees, and I would like to see a compromise. Currently around the viaduct, there are the 90-degree vertical curbs. During this whole process, some of us, myself included, have no, um, engineering experience to know that there are different kinds of curbs. There is a curb called, I think, in layperson's terms, uh, a rollover curb, and this is less harsh and less severe. I would like there to be some gradual going from the rural area to the hardscape of the vertical curbs at the viaduct. And if we have to have curbs, which I'm not in favor of at all, but I feel this would be a compromise, is to have the rollover curves. And, um, I was told during these meetings that those aren't very safe. Well, I've never seen any statistics that said that they are safer than having two ditches, which people go slowly so they don't fall into the ditch when they drive. I was told that it's better for plowing. Well, right now, they, the plows are doing just fine with no curbs. So I think that having rollover curbs, if we must have curbs, would be a wonderful compromise. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'm available. Thank you.
Thanks very much for your comments tonight. Michelle, do you see any other folks with their hands raised?
Yes, one more. Al Steele, if you'd like to unmute your mic, you can have the floor. Please state your name and address, please.
Did I do it?
You did.
My name is Al Steele. I live at 926 Edgewood, which, as Ben is my next-door neighbor, uh, we live east. Uh, I'm just kind of reiterating what, what Ben said, that if that's even an option to have, if you are going to do the sidewalk, and, uh, if it's even an option to extend it a little bit further, I also have a dog, and it's somewhat hairy just getting to that, uh, the place where you can bike and walk on the south side of Edgewood. It's not that far, but you got nowhere to go on the road. So a lot of times I walk my dog kind of late in the afternoon, and by the time I return, it's, it's dark, and it's really a bear if there's any traffic at all, you know, getting from that, uh, south side, uh, bikeway, walkway back to my house. So I would, I would be in favor if, if that becomes an option, you know, uh, with you guys. So I just kind of want to reiterate what, what Ben said. It's a little freaky. I do it, but, uh, you can't go down into the ditch when a car comes. You're kind of at the, uh, mercy of whatever that a car is going to do. And as Ben said, it really gets heightened when two cars are coming in opposite directions. So anyhow, that's, that's all.
Thanks, Al. Appreciate your comments.
And I believe that's the last comment that I see. The hands raised.
Okay. Are any volunteer board reports that you're seeing, Michelle, tonight from the public? Any hands raised for volunteer board?
No. Uh, Benjamin, I think your hand is raised, but I think, um, you're not, are you on a committee?
I don't think he is.
I don't think so either. So...
Did I unmute?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I, I, I didn't want to end what we were just at. Um, I'm sorry. Uh, I know that I'm not part of that committee, but there are two other addresses. Um, one, uh, being Bobby Williams, uh, Hillburn at, uh, 918, and then Paige McDonald at, uh, 950 Edgewood. And we are all residents. I spoke with everybody just yesterday, and it didn't seem that everybody was up to date with everything that was going on. Um, for some reason, they are not participating. Uh, the, I, I sent them the link to, to be able to. I, I, I do know that they all wanted the sidewalk as well. Um, and I was just hoping that by adding this last little bit, that it might help with, um, the rest of the residents in this little section of the block on Edgewood. Um, I apologize that it was just a little bit, um, I, I found out how to do this just yesterday, and maybe not everybody was able to, to get aboard, but I wanted to speak for them too as well if possible.
Thanks, Benjamin.
Thank you.
With that said, I'll turn it back to the council. Any volunteer board reports from the council tonight? You can just raise your hand if you have a report to share, please. And not seeing any, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Any changes or additions to the minutes from the February 1st, 2021 regular meeting?
No. This is Rebecca.
Mr. Mayor, I would...
No changes.
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Frank, is there a second?
Second.
It goes seconded by Rebecca, if I'm not mistaken. Michelle, roll call, please.
Uh, Counselor Cornell?
Aye.
Counselor Sweeney?
Approved.
Counselor Davis?
In favor.
Counselor Henin? Counselor Henin, I think we lost him. Uh, Counselor Fury?
In favor, Michelle.
And Counselor Norton?
In favor.
Thank you.
And that motion goes carry unanimously. I believe, uh, we missed Ryan Henin's vote on the consent agenda. It does pass on a five vote. We'll move on to our first and only public hearing of the evening, which will be Resolution 21-05, a resolution setting the registration fee for a dangerous dog. And I know, Angie, are you going to be presenting this, this evening, or is Mary attending tonight?
Um, I will actually be presenting it.
Okay. Thanks, Angie. Good evening.
So, good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, one correction that Dana caught, and thank you so much, Dana, is the resolution actually refers to Resolution 1814 in the Whereas clauses. It should be Ordinance 1814. So a couple of years ago, we had, um, some bad dog problems, um, mostly at the dog park. And so Maria and I worked on a dangerous dog ordinance that, um, again, we passed close to three years ago. Um, that ordinance referred to a registration fee for dogs that have bitten either a human or another animal and required registration, um, of those dogs. It hasn't been an issue, which is really good because everyone's thought it would be nice, but, uh, my prosecutor, Mary, has had a couple of cases, um, in the past six months where there has been a dangerous dog that we do require registration for. So I'll let her, um, report to me speak for itself. I would have adopted it in my own staff report, but Mary does really good work, and I kind of like you guys to see it sometimes, um, in the realm that's not in the criminal field, but rather the civil field. So she did some research and, um, found that a reasonable fee for registration of a dangerous dog would be $75 per year. Um, and again, the only reason this came up is because we have had a couple of cases, um, that probably would require somebody to register a dangerous dog. So I am happy to answer any questions you may have. And again, um, I would have put it in my own staff report, but Mary did such a good job that I think for you guys to see her work.
Thanks, Angie. Please extend our appreciation to Mary, if you don't mind. And I'll start with the council. Rebecca, any questions on what will be Ordinance 21-05?
Uh, yes, I do, I do have a question. Um, there's been two dogs running around, and I think they ran through my neighborhood, uh, but they've killed four deer, and, um, and they're dangerous, but they're not being, they're not caught yet. Um, I thought that when dogs killed wildlife, there were pretty extreme fines too. Should we, um, include that, or is that through fish and wildlife?
Um, that's actually through us, Rebecca, and, and I, I heard about it too. We actually got the email as well, and it was pretty disturbing. Um, so it is actually through us, and i- it's not necessarily a fine. So when that happens, if a dog hurts a person or hurts other wildlife, um, we would prosecute them, and there are pretty extreme penalties that can go along with that, including euthanizing the dog. I don't think we've ever done that. Um, and some conditions that the judge can impose on the dog itself, including, you know, keeping it in a secure backyard, posting signs, "Dangerous dog." So I, we have all that in place. This just basically is if it's a repeat offender dog, registering the dog with the police so the police know where the dog is, and we can have a little bit more control over it.
Thank you, Angie.
Angie, just for clarification, this is a resolution, correct?
This is a resolution, John. It's just the first Whereas. We refers to Resolution 1814, and it actually should be Ordinance 1814.
Okay. Thanks for clarification.
Yeah, and thanks for Dana for catching that.
Uh, Andy, any questions for Andy?
So Angie, just quickly, so definition of, and how a dog becomes designated a dangerous dog is contained in the ordinance, is that correct, 1814?
It is correct. Yeah. And it's usually biting, you know, and not necessarily biting another dog. There's, I mean, dogs bite dogs, right? Um, and, and it's not just looking dangerous. If that was, if that was the case, I'd have a problem because my dogs are weighs more than I do. Um, so it, it's not just looking dangerous. It's actually attacking, you know, another dog, um, a human. So it's all contained in the ordinance. This is just registering it so our police know, you know, where they are.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Counselor Cornell, any questions on the staff report?
Yeah, um, I just, it, my question was about, we didn't go with any sort of insurance thing. Instead, we're just going to have them rep, pay 75 bucks a year. What, what does that do for liability for those people if somebody gets bit or something like that?
Pretty much nothing. I mean, truthfully, but we can't, uh, Mary and I had the conversation, and just trying to track and get people to insure, I mean, your homeowner's insurance may cover it, right? But just trying to force people to insure against that just seemed to be, um, really clunky. Like, I don't know that how we could have enforced people to insure against a dangerous dog.
Even after they've been prosecuted as a dangerous dog and found guilty of having a dangerous dog? Even after they've been prosecuted as a dangerous dog and found guilty of having a dangerous dog?
Getting people to get insurance is really hard, which is why, you know, we have twenty-five thousand dollar liability limits in Montana for even car insurance.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Steve. Uh, Councilor Sweeney?
Angie, this is a really random question. The idea, the idea that we would license a dangerous dog seems to me be the antithesis of what we want. We don't want dangerous dogs effectively licensed or endorsed by the city. I mean, I, and so I, I, that kind of occurred to me as I'm looking at this thing and so I'm thinking, what are we doing here? And I understand what the process is. Um, is that this is an annual fee. Is there any way for a dog that's been designated or found to have been a dangerous dog to get off that list? Or are they on? I'm sure.
Are they on parole forever? No, I totally understand. Yeah. No, I mean, I, I, I think that, you know, and I think that to the extent we're talking about dangerous dogs, it's not like a dog that nits somebody. It's a dog that kills another dog. It's a dog that hurts somebody, right? So I don't know that there's a way for them to get off parole. Um, I think it's just more of a tool for us to know where they are and especially if the judge is imposing conditions on still having the dog. I mean, we don't want to euthanize dogs. That's not kind of, I think, what we're about in Whitefish. Um, but it's a way to track, you know, so you have a dog that has these conditions. It's bit someone that's bit another dog. You have to, you know, keep it secure. You have to have signs posted. I think it's more a tracking device more than anything, right? Just so, you know, we have some sort of, you know, clue where, where they are and how we can, how we can track even if conditions are imposed by the judge, how we can track that those are still in place.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Councilor Davis, questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. And finally, Ryan, any questions for Angie? We still lost Ryan here?
Yeah, I think he's still not connected.
Okay, we'll let the record reflect that we lost Ryan. Hopefully he'll return. Uh, with that said, any further questions for Angie before we hold our public hearing? Michelle, I'll turn it over to you to entertain public comment tonight.
Okay, so I did put in the chat, if you wanted to speak towards this item, to raise your hand. Um, I'll repeat the three ways of doing that. You can, um, click the participants list towards the bottom of the right-hand corner and hover over your name and right-click on your hand icon. You can, um, off, you're on the phone, star three on your phone pad. You can hit the three buttons or three dots to the left of the X at the bottom of your screen to find your hand icon, or you can send me a chat by clicking the chat button at the bottom right-hand sign and type a question and enter it into me. We'll give you just a few minutes. Um, we'll move on. Looks like we're good, John.
Okay. Thanks, Michelle. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve Resolution twenty-one dash oh five, which is a resolution setting the registration fee for a dangerous dog.
Thank you. Andy, is there a second to the motion?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Councilor Sweeney. Andy, would you like to speak to your motion?
Uh, no comment.
Further comment from the council? Michelle, roll call, please, on the motion.
Councilor Cornell?
Aye.
Councilor Sweeney?
In favor.
Councilor Davis?
In favor.
Councilor Fury?
In favor.
Councilor Norton?
In favor.
And Councilor Henin is still not with us. So that would be all.
Yeah, I just, he sent me a message that he's trying to get back on his computer, but he's having problems. With that said, that motion uh, does pass unanimously of the members present tonight. Thanks very much, Michelle, and thank you, Angie, for the staff report. And we will move on to item seven of our agenda, which is communications from Craig Workman, our Public Works Director, and we'll have item A, consideration of approval to authorize and to proceed with the design of Edgewood Place Reconstruction Project. Craig, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Good to see you guys.
You too.
Welcome also to the public that has attended tonight. We appreciate that very much. Um, so the Edgewood Place and Texas Avenue Reconstruction Project is next up on the resort tax priority list. These two collector streets do serve a vital role in the city's transportation network with Edgewood Place serving as the only roadway to provide ingress egress to and from the city on the north side of the viaduct and Texas Avenue being the primary access to dozens of homes on the north side of town. Uh, the public work, work staff has been working on the preliminary design, uh, which will reconstruct Edgewood Place from Colorado Avenue to the eastern city, city limits, as well as Texas Avenue from Edgewood Place, uh, to its northern limit. Uh, one of the highest priorities of this job is the enhancement of driver and pedestrian safety that will be realized through roadway improvements, street lighting, intersection improvements, and improved pedestrian accommodations. Um, staff has also been working hard to balance, uh, the desires of the residents to maintain the rural character and quality of the neighborhood. I think we heard quite a bit of that already this evening. Um, but we also need to balance that with the long-term vision and growth projections for the corridor. Uh, City Council awarded the engineering contract for the project to RPA, uh, back in September, and they've been assisting with public involvement and project management, and also providing surveying and engineering services on the project. Uh, survey crews were able to get the necessary data collected last year before the snow started flying. Uh, and we also, uh, completed a geotechnical investigation to assist with design efforts. Uh, public outreach began last year when a project website was built, uh, that was done last fall. And since then, uh, we've sent three project newsletters, held three public outreach events via WebEx, and had numerous individual meetings uh, with residents interested in the project. I feel at this point, we're at a comfortable place in our design efforts, uh, preliminarily to present you, um, our preliminary recommendations on the Edgewood Place portion of the project. So attached to this report, which, um, was included in your packet are several figures, which provide an overview of the initial layout options for Edgewood Place, a proposed schedule, the current estimated budget, and the summary of the written comment we've received today, to date, excuse me. Um, so given the magnitude and scope of the project, it is recommended, um, that we complete this in two phases. Phase one will involve the reconstruction of Edgewood Place, which we're hoping to complete this summer. Uh, and phase two will involve the reconstruction of Texas Avenue in a future budget year. Uh, the city's approved transportation plan calls for Edgewood Place to be an urban collector, uh, which in the engineering standards is shown as a thirty-two foot wide roadway, which includes curb and gutter. Um, upon evaluating the existing and projected vehicular traffic on Edgewood Place, as well as the significant number of cyclists that use the roadway, uh, we're recommending a reduced width of twenty-eight feet. Uh, we feel this reduction in recommended road width will help calm traffic while still providing the necessary space for bicyclists on the roadway. Uh, the current roadway alignment is shifted to the southern edge of the right-of-way, uh, which is sixty feet wide. Um, and the proposed, um, this will help allow, um, maintain additional distance between the proposed improvements and the existing homes on the north side of the road, uh, by reducing the width to twenty-eight feet. Keep also keeping the roadway at a similar elevation in the southern portion of the right-of-way will help allow us to maintain cover over the existing gas main and take advantage of the existing gravel base, um, that has been shown to be rather significant through our geotechnical exploration. Staff does understand there's a strong desire from residents to maintain the rural feel of the roadway, and some residents have expressed the sentiment that standard vertical face curb will take away from this rural appeal. We heard that earlier from Suki. Um, however, staff and our engineers do truly believe that the traditional vertical curb will have numerous, that we've completed on numerous past projects, does offer the best opportunity to control drainage. It's more consistent and easier for snow removal, uh, and it also does provide safety aspects for driver, uh, drivers, um, helping kind of keep people on the road, so to speak. Um, their support staff is recommending the continuation of the vertical face curb from the intersection of Colorado Avenue to about two hundred and fifty feet east of Texas Avenue. The Connect Whitefish Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan recommends the shared use path along the south side of Edgewood place be extended to East Second Street. Um, that's shown in that Connect Whitefish Plan as a tier-three connectivity project. Um, while there's definitely, uh, an intent to extend this path to the east, we're hesitant to build that as part of this project, feeling that it'll definitely need to be part of a larger future bike ped project that loops all the way back to East Second Street. The path will take place almost entirely outside of city limits, um, and constructing it will likely require significant land acquisition, definitely require significant capital costs, uh, and there's also future maintenance considerations that will need to be, um, considered. So much of the conversation regarding Edgewood has revolved around the sidewalk, um, on the north side of the road. Given the existing and projected residential density on the north side of Edgewood Place, staff does feel pretty strongly that a sidewalk should be installed on the north side, uh, to provide pedestrians a separated walkway leading to safe crosswalks uh, to access the shared use path on the south side of the road. To present the options to residents, we modeled the limits of construction with and without the sidewalk, and those are shown, um, in the enclosed report. And while the sidewalk does extend the limits of construction, on average, about five feet, uh, there is room to construct that sidewalk entirely within the existing right-of-way. It will require multiple, uh, mature trees, uh, to be removed, but honestly, that is regardless of, of which option we go for. You know, I apologize if during the public, uh, meetings, we indicated that a meandering path may, uh, be a means to save some of these trees. I think that regardless of what we do, reconstructing this road, um, is going to result in a loss of numerous mature, mature trees. Um, we did work with the Parks Department to, um, inventory and, um, evaluate the trees and, um, the bulk of those larger willows are towards the end of their, um, expected life and, and do require some maintenance anyway. So, um, we can definitely talk about that, though. Um, so to get a better feel for the desires of the residents, a questionnaire was distributed, um, asking for responses on the addition of the sidewalk. Uh, the responses are included in this report and did show uh, about sixty-five percent of the respondents being in favor of the sidewalk. Um, so we received a total of forty responses and twenty-six of those responses favored the sidewalk on the north side of Edgewood. In addition, eleven of those forty responses were from residents directly affected by the sidewalk on the north side of Edgewood, and about the same percentage, sixty-four percent, or seven of those eleven, um, favored the addition of the sidewalk. Um, so based on this information, um, the anticipated increases in residential density and the enormous safety benefits that we feel a sidewalk would provide, we are recommending the final design incorporate a five-foot concrete sidewalk on the north side of Edgewood between Colorado and Texas. Um, this recommendation was also supported by the planning department when we reviewed the project with them last month. Uh, it's intended that the sidewalk would be separated by a six-foot landscape boulevard. Uh, in addition, we're recommending the speed limit be reduced to twenty-five miles an hour on the roadway and three stops be installed, or three-way stops, excuse me, be installed at Texas and Colorado. Um, that will help to, um, control vehicles and improve safety at these crosswalks. Uh, stormwater management, uh, is another key priority of the project. A new stormwater system is proposed uh, in Edgewood Place, uh, with capacity for future extension up Texas Avenue. Uh, we did consider a larger regional stormwater collection with this project, um, which would involve about two thousand feet of storm main discharging to Cal Creek. Uh, however, um, we were able to discover that there is a large diameter storm sewer crossing Wisconsin Avenue that has plenty of capacity for this project. RPA discovered that during a review of some past, um, ASB build drawings. And so we're working with MDT to connect the facility, which will be incorporated in the final design. Um, doing so, we think will save hundreds of thousands of dollars in additional pipe and permitting, um, while still allowing us to serve future growth in the watershed. Um, it'll also allow us to utilize the swale on the west side of Wisconsin Avenue, which will help to meet some of our water quality standards without requiring a mechanical stormwater treatment device. So it's kind of an exciting find. There's currently a fourteen-inch water main that runs from Texas Avenue, uh, to the eastern city limits. Actually, I think that's, uh, runs most of the project length. Sorry, there's a typo there. I think it, it runs from Colorado Avenue to the eastern, um, city limits. And this water main is a ductile iron pipe. It's about fifty years old. And so we're proposing to upgrade the facility to a sixteen, sixteen-inch PVC main. Um, this will help satisfy growing demand in the neighborhood, accommodate, uh, future extension to the east, and ensure the roadway is not disturbed for future water main repairs. Um, as with past road reconstruction projects, we are recommending this corridor be upgraded to include decorative lighting. Um, like the recently completed reconstruction of Summers and State Park, uh, we're planning to incorporate dark sky compliant LED lights. Um, the lights are recommended in the northern boulevard, so the house side shields can be incorporated as we've done on past projects. Uh, in terms of traffic, uh, the city has experienced issues with construction traffic patterns and traffic related, control-related issues, and so, uh, the project will be bid with a specific traffic control plan. To allow closure of the roadway, um, during the heavy excavation, um, we're intending to incorporate some temporary improvements to maintain access, uh, for the residents directly adjacent to the project. So as I mentioned, this project is slated to be paid for by resort tax funds. Uh, the total estimated cost for Edgewood and Texas together is about five million dollars. The cost for the Edgewood portion of the project, based on staff's recommendation for final design, is about two-point-three million dollars. Um, we have three hundred thousand dollars in the current fiscal year budget, uh, for the project for design work. Um, and I am recommending at this point that we put two-point-eight million dollars, twenty-eight-six-five, in the fiscal twenty-two budget. Still working with Dana and Ben, um, on resort tax revenues to, um, to make sure that we're comfortable with that. But we definitely want to proceed with design so that we have a final cost estimate and then we can look at where we are with revenues when we go to, to bid the project. Um, so, based on the guidance and direction received to date from council and the resort tax committee, the public outreach has been conducted. Uh, I respectfully request authorization to proceed with the design of Edgewood Place based on these recommendations.
Craig, thanks very much. I'm sure there will be questions from the council. I might just go ahead and start if the council doesn't mind. Um, I know this is in your staff report. Can you just briefly touch on where you're proposing to have pedestrian activated crossings? Are they at both Colorado and Texas or just Texas?
You know, we're actually, at this point, we're looking at three-way stop signs, um, at both intersections, which will, um, serve the same purpose as, as the pedestrian activated signals. So typically, we use pedestrian activated signals where there isn't traffic control. Um, and the traffic control actually provides one, um, kind of layer of additional security.
So there, there will be three-way stops at both intersections? That's been decided?
Um, that's what we're proposing. Um, we're in the process of doing the, um, the warrants analysis, but quite honestly, I'm not sure that's going to get us where we want to be. We still think that, um, just based on, um, especially at Colorado with that blind curve, um, a, a three-way stop is definitely warranted. But, um, just in terms of the, the pedestrian activity at both intersections, we think that the three-way stops are our best solution.
Great. Um, secondly, the board, did we receive comments from many individuals living on Texas as well as Colorado? In addition to those residents along Edgewood proper? The reason I ask, I'm just curious what the preferences were of those that reside on Texas and Colorado because as you Texas and Colorado, because as you recall, we were kind of petitioned as a city a number of years ago to evaluate the feasibility of adding sidewalks on Texas Avenue out of concern for not only Edgewood, but of course, Texas as well. I'm just curious how much public input we received through this process from those neighborhoods as well.
Yeah, we, you know, so of the responses that we got to the survey, which dealt specifically with the Edgewood Place sidewalk, there were, you know, about 30 responses from, I think mostly Texas Avenue, perhaps some on Denver, and maybe a couple on Colorado. But we, you know, we really haven't gotten to the point where we're ready to make any preliminary design recommendations on Texas yet. I think that what we're looking at at this point is an actual shared use path on Texas, either on the west or the east side, that would extend at least from Edgewood up to Denver. We've heard significant comments from folks north of Denver on Texas indicating they don't want any improvements, no lights, no sidewalk, no path, anything north of Denver. But I think at a minimum, we need to look at, when we move forward with those preliminary design recommendations for Texas, we need to look at having a path at least between Edgewood and Denver.
Okay. Do you recall, just off the top of your head, if the respondents that lived on Texas Avenue were in favor or not in favor of the sidewalk on the north side of Edgewood, given their past concerns with safety?
Yeah, so of those 40 responses, 26 in total were in support. So if you take out 11, you've got, what, 29, and you take out seven, you've got 19. So 19 of the 29 responses were not from Edgewood and were in favor.
Okay. Thanks for that. And then lastly, and I'll then turn it back to the council, probably a question for Dana, Resort Tax Revenue Outlook. What are the trends looking like as far as you can tell for the last, you know, eight to 12 months in terms of total revenue, given the times we're in?
So I might turn it over to Ben, but I will just
Sorry, I didn't see that there.
That's okay. Just want to give him a shot, as our new finance director. But, you know, I, overall, the projections that I had early on with the budget, you know, luckily, we didn't come to those numbers, but we have had sustained decreases in some of our categories, not specifically retail, but lodging. So, you know, I think we do need to do some more analysis if this is a financially feasible project to do in one summer in fiscal year '22, but I'll turn it over to Ben, and he can give you a little more detail.
Great. Sorry about that, Ben. I didn't flip my screen to see that you were on.
No worries for my part, for sure. Looking at resort tax, just from this fiscal year for fiscal year '21, it does look like we're up 4.99%, and that's due to some really good months in August and September. But I think a lot of those resort tax receipts that we got in those months were from prior periods that were paid in late. So from a performance of cash coming in the door for the city of Whitefish during those months, we do have some positive results through December as we look into our collections thus far in fiscal year '21. But when I start to take a look at actual receipts for the month in which those taxes are due, we are down a little bit. It's down about 2.9%. And there are some late collections coming in here and there for those periods. So I guess what I'm trying to say here is it is a little bit difficult to forecast exactly how resort tax will come in. So there's one way of looking at it from a cash perspective. It has been doing so far well this year, but bars and restaurants in particular are not doing as well, and retail is doing really well, I would say. And it's interesting to watch those purchasing patterns exist here, you know, or occur here in Whitefish. And as I've learned how this is working, we might have some difficulty forecasting what this next six months might look like. If we have a big tour season again, we might have some great numbers to post. I think it's better than I think we thought, but not necessarily, you know, huge growth over growth, you know, over what we've seen in the past few years.
Great. Thanks, Ben. Appreciate that. And we'll start with questions. Thanks again, Ben. Rebecca, any questions for Craig or staff on the staff report?
No, I thought the, well, I do have one major question. I thought the staff report was really well done. Lots of detail. It was nice reading through all the comments from the neighbors. The only, well, two things. I don't know if there's any way that we could keep some of the large trees and actually look at what's possible down there. I think it really changes the neighborhood when you start to eliminate mature trees, so I wish that that was possible. The second thing is it was cool that you discovered the stormwater sewer. It's surprising that nobody knew it was there, but I wondered about the, how that will affect the drainage. Does it, is that going to then drain down to the same area in front of the lodge? Or where will that all go to, Craig? And will that affect that area of, because it's an issue, and we're trying to improve that area?
No, that'll actually drain, it'll continue, it'll go under the viaduct and then continue on the south side of Edgewood and discharge to the river, directly to the river.
Okay, great. Yeah, that is nice that you were able to access that. No, I really liked the idea too of the curvy kid-friendly sidewalks on Texas when we get to that project, but otherwise, I'm glad that you're looking at the safety with a divided pathway. I don't think that area ever has very good light, so whatever we can do to improve safety is going to be helpful. Thank you.
Kind of a quick follow-up on one of Rebecca's comments. Craig, the stormwater conveyance on the south side of West Edgewood or from Wisconsin west to where the outfall is, back to the Whitefish River, that also conveys some of the runoff from the BNSF rail yard. What type of filtration system, if any, do we have on that outfall? Or is it more of a bio-swale type approach?
Yeah, it is. It's definitely the bio-swale type approach. I'm not aware of any mechanical treatment or filtration that takes place, but one of the things I think we would look to do is evaluate that swale all the way to its discharge and see if there's any opportunity to, you know, to improve any of the nutrient removal or sediment removal, you know, through improvements to the swale itself.
I think that would be prudent, and I live in that neighborhood, and when I walk the bike paths, the shared bike path, there's, I mean, that's definitely an intermittent water course. I mean, it flows, you know, probably more than six months a year in my opinion. There's always something at the end, at least half the year. So it'd be, I think it would just be prudent to look at that in a more holistic manner as part of this project.
Okay, good idea.
Councilor Fury, any questions for staff?
I guess just a first question, Craig, and you addressed it a little bit, but not in great detail in the staff report, because it was brought up tonight by a couple of the commenters in public comment. So was the decision to not extend sidewalk past Texas to try and maintain the rural feel for inbound traffic from the east, is that was, did I get that as the primary reason for that? Hello?
Craig, I think you might be muted.
Looks like his connection might have broke.
Losing people left and right tonight.
I do see Brandon is on. Maybe Brandon can answer that question, do you think?
Yeah, Brandon, are you available to answer? And if you heard my question?
Yeah, so let's say east of Texas, you know, the rural feel, it does help with the rural feel there. But mostly, we're kind of in a spot there where we just don't really know what to build there. The Connect Whitefish Plan calls for a shared use path that goes along the south side of Edgewood, but the road is more favoring the south side, so a path should maybe be put on the north side. So we start looking at the different options, and we're not exactly sure where the path should go. And the other part of it is that, you know, we think that just a sidewalk, if we were to install something, we would just put a sidewalk in. And when a future path project comes along, would we be able to extend that or widen that sidewalk? Or would we want to take the sidewalk out and reconstruct it with a, with an asphalt path? So we just have a lot of questions there as to what the future connection project would be for that path that goes from Edgewood all the way around to East Second Street is what that Connect Whitefish Plan calls for. I hope that answered your questions.
Yeah, I'll just follow up there a little bit, as I kind of said, that something will happen there, we just maybe don't know what it's going to be as part of this construction project, but there will be a pedestrian access on the north side of the road, hopefully at some point. I mean, I guess, or a decent, a decent crossing there to get people to the south side.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And, you know, if the path, if that future path does go on the south side of Edgewood, we're going to have to really work with BNSF on that and get a land use license to complete that. So I think the path probably is better suited on the north side, but once again, you know, there's some work that needs to be done, there's some planning and to figure out exactly what to do there.
Okay, thank you. I guess my other question would be, as long as you're there, Brandon, too, regarding the trees on the north side. I'm kind of assuming that, given the rather massive root structures that willows have, by the time we dig down and do everything, saving those trees would be quite difficult? Is, am I, is that what I'm reading in the report also?
Yeah, that's correct. There's, I think, it was mentioned that there was eight trees by some public comment earlier, there's actually nine willow trees. You know, three of them are on a property near the Texas intersection, and they're a little bit closer to the right of way, they're a little bit further north from the road improvements. Then there's six other ones that are actually in front of Ben Davis's home there, and they're pretty, pretty close to the road right now, and they'll be much closer to the road that we're building. We're pretty certain that those six in front of Ben's place, regardless if we put a sidewalk in or not, we're going to have to remove them. There would be a significant amount of fill that we'd have to place around the base of those trees. But Karen Hilding and Craig and I have been looking at the other three at Texas, and we're not quite sure yet on those, depending on if we put the sidewalk in or not. Could those trees maybe be in a boulevard? We want to, we want to take a close look at it, at those other three trees, to see if maybe there is something we could save there. But preliminarily, all nine trees will have some type of impacts from, from the work that we're doing.
Yeah, and I know sadly, willows don't have a long life expectancy, typically 50 to 75 years under good conditions, so if the Parks Department says that some of those are near the end of their life, I would not be surprised, because they are very big, old, large trees and have been there a very long time. So, yeah, that's all the questions I have currently, so.
Thanks, Andy. Councilor Cornell?
Thanks, John. I do have a few questions. So we are, we are reconstructing the road all the way to the edge of the county line, right?
That is correct. It's going to change from an urban section to a rural section, but we are going all the way to the county line. That is correct.
Okay, and then, then that's where our, that's where we stop?
That's correct.
The road goes back to potholes and everything else, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I don't know why all the background noise came in. One thing I was just going to point out, the county did recently reconstruct Edgewood from the city limits all the way out to, I don't know if they went all the way to the Blue Moon or not, but so that section of roadway is in fairly good shape.
I did notice that.
I can't get my camera to work.
Can actually ride your road bike through there now and not worry about getting a flat. My other question, boy, it just, it just seems odd that we're going to do all that work on the road and not, not put, and not extend the, at least some sort of path, whether it's a sidewalk or not, all the way to the county line. Because, I mean, there's, there's a number, I think I counted six or seven residences right there that would use that sidewalk as a safety thing, and it just seems like this would be the time to put a path in there, even if it's just a sidewalk and we end up with a shared use path later, we could start at the, at the edge of the county line. It's only, you know, it's a matter of 100 yards or so that it would be a sidewalk continued. I just don't, I'm really confused by that piece, because it is such a safety issue, and I live on another, in another part of town where there's a big sidewalk safety issue. But that would also, looking at Google Maps and Google Earth, and it looks like it would take out a lot of trees to put in that sidewalk for that one block there, however far that is, because that's densely populated with trees. So, I don't know. And then my other question is about, go ahead if you have a comment on that.
Yeah, can I just hit on that real quick, Steve? So one of the things that, that I didn't mention in the staff report is that very eastern edge of Edgewood, so probably, I'm going to say the last 200 feet or so of city road and the first 200 feet or so of county road fall slightly outside of the right of way, and they're on BNSF property. And so I did meet with BN to show them that, and they basically said, hey, look, if you're putting the road back where it is, you know, we're not worried about this, it's just a tiny little triangle. But if we're going to start talking about more significant reconstruction with curb and gutter and sidewalk, I'm not sure that a sidewalk and a curb on the north side is so much of an issue, but it might be odd to have curb boulevard sidewalk on the north and not do anything on the south. So that's one kind of hurdle that we're dealing with. We figured down the road, no pun intended, when we look to install the shared use path further east, we could work out that right of way issue with BNSF. So just throwing that in there.
Okay, I get it. I just, it still just seems a wasted opportunity to not get that sidewalk connected for the seven or so properties that are, that are along there. Because I get it, it's downright dangerous in areas where there aren't sidewalks to walk around here. And this is one of those de facto bypasses now that people use to get around going through town. And Seventh Street to Caro is another one, and there's no sidewalk, and it's dangerous. So, I mean, to me, it's not a deal breaker, I just, it just seems a little out of place. And then it also seems a little weird that we have that connection to the trail that's already on BNSF property, the shared use path, and that connects to nowhere when you go across the street at Texas Avenue, doesn't connect to anything. And it wouldn't connect to the new sidewalk because it would, because the sidewalk is on the other side of Texas Avenue, it's on the west side of Texas. Okay, that's just, that's my thinking about that. I guess, I guess what I'm saying is I'd rather see us just put in a sidewalk while we're, while we're at it, instead of wait till later, knowing that it's a safety issue. The other question I have is about, do we, do we need a flashing, do we need a three-way stop at Texas? Because, I mean, I get it for Colorado, that one's definitely a safety issue. Don't know about Texas, a three-way stop.
Yeah, we, I think we just evaluated the opportunity to either put a pedestrian-activated signal or a stop sign or a three-way stop at Texas and thought the stop would be, would provide an additional layer of safety. It also, I think, is a cue to drivers, especially, you know, west It also, I think, is a cue to drivers, especially, you know, westbound drivers coming into the city that, you know, you're, you're entering, you know, an urban area and it's a cue to kind of slow down and be more alert. So I don't think it's 100% warranted. I think we could go with a pet activated signal there, but we think that the stop sign would be just that extra layer of safety.
And the cost is the same essentially, less maybe for a stop sign?
Yeah, it would actually be a couple thousand dollars less for the stop sign than the solar signal.
Okay. I don't think that's, I think that's fine. The other question I had is looking at the, the financing of all this. I just, $403,000 in professional fees is 17% of the project. Is that, is that a standard, is that like a standard amount? Do we see any breakout of how that professional money is spent? Does all that go to RPA? Are there other professionals? I'm trying to wrap my head around why this is 17% of the project.
Yeah, that is a, it's a fairly standard percentage for engineering. That is, um, you know, the, so typically we see, I'd say like 18 to 24% or so all in. And that's, you know, to project completion. So the 400 gets us through, through bidding. And then there'll be some construction oversight that RPA will do. So that is pretty much entirely RPA. There is some, you know, geotechnical analysis that, that went into it. And I'm not sure if RPA has any other subs on the project. But we are billed, you know, on a monthly basis, there are T and M invoices that come in. And so we do see them. It's not just a lump sum, you know, pay the 400 grand. So we do review invoices on a monthly basis to confirm that RPA is, you know, doing the work and, you know, in compliance with the contract. But yeah, no, there's no question that engineering is a significant portion of any capital project that the city does.
Okay. I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Thanks, Steve. Counselor Sweeney, any questions?
I'm about to revisit a couple. I guess my, and Craig, you and I have had this conversation many, many times now. Have we thought through whether or not, since we feel the need to put in a sidewalk or that it doesn't make any difference in terms of what trees will be taken and not taken? Have we thought about whether or not we could, for lack of a better, put in some enhanced landscaping? Increase the number of trees in the boulevard or replacement trees as we leave those areas that we've disturbed to at least recreate to some degree the density of, of cover that we have there now? Has that been considered or is that anything that we can think about? And then the other is, I will go, I'll go, I'll go with Steve. Is, you know, if we feel so compelled to have a damn sidewalk, which, okay, I think it's a safety issue too, probably out there. Why we wouldn't take it out to the county, to the county line is like beyond me. Because the people that we've talked to this evening, if I'm not mistaken, that are asking us for to do that, they're the ones that will be most affected by it. And, you know, you were telling me that the shared use path on the south side is in Never Neverland because we don't know what the hell is going to happen with BNSF. And given history, what we've seen over on Birch Point or other places is that it can be in forever. I mean, literally forever. So why wouldn't we take this opportunity to put in the sidewalk that the folks on that end of, of Birch, excuse me, of, yeah, of East Tedwood, of Edgewood Place want? That just doesn't bother, so those are my two questions that are here. And will we have, you know, if we proceed with this contract, will these be things that you guys can look at as part of that project and come up with real answers for?
So yeah, what, um, what, I wish you could see my camera because I'm smiling when you brought up the lights. So I appreciate that. I very much expected it and I was ready for the debate. So, um, you know, so the lighting issue is definitely something that we look at anytime we add pedestrian improvements on a project. And in addition, I think that this particular project, we're really trying to calm traffic and give folks that visual cue that they're entering the city and they're coming into, you know, a more dense urban area. And the streetlights are honestly one of those things that, that helps accomplish that. You know, it brings the, the road edge in a little closer. It's just a visual kind of stimuli that, wait a second, something's going on here, I should slow down. In addition to the fact that, you know, the lighting is, we feel important for, you know, the additional pedestrian activity that's going to happen on the north side of that road. Assuming that's the direction the council wants to go. So that's the lighting. In terms of the sidewalk, yeah, we have all the opportunity in the world to extend that sidewalk all the way to the city limits. Our initial recommendation was, we're not quite ready to do that because we don't know what the future of the path looks like going further east. It's in the Connect Whitefish Plan. But if I'm, you know, if council is interested in continuing that, I don't know, Brandon, help me out, it's probably about 300 or 400 feet of additional sidewalk. That's definitely something we could do. It would likely come with it, curb and gutter and boulevard on the north side and some additional streetlights. It's just a question of what we do on the south side. I'd probably have to have another conversation with BNSF about adding curb on the south side to the city limits. But the intention of this report is really just to provide our initial recommendation so that we can proceed to final design where we can look at those sorts of elements. And by all means, if we want to go sidewalk all the way to the city limits, we have that opportunity.
Okay, glad. Further questions, Frank?
The other, the other that we hadn't talked about here is, you know, given what we're going to, what's going to happen here and what, what happened regardless of whether we put a sidewalk on the north side or not, there's going to be a bunch of trees that are missing. It's really, it, I, I really feel for all of the residents along that area because it is, they're now going to be, instead of being in a sheltered area, they're going to be fully exposed to a street with a lot of traffic on it. Is there not a way for us to consider putting in, like I said, some enhanced landscaping along there to effectively try to mimic what's there now, only with healthier, more long-term elements?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed that part.
For one second.
Yeah.
I'm hearing a lot of background noise and obviously someone's not muted. If you can hear this, would you please mute your system when you're not participating in the meeting? It's, it's rather distracting. Thank you. Go ahead, Craig.
Are you hearing the background when I unmute? Is that all right? Okay, I'm not sure if it's when I unmute that, um, that it turns on. Okay.
Someone's just chatting in the background.
Yeah, you know what, there's background conversations going on here. I'll relocate. So the, in terms of trees, what we typically do with these projects, in fact, what we always do with these projects is we work with the tree committee post-construction. And we go, well, typically about midway through construction, we work with the tree committee to go out and survey the area. The tree committee normally walks it and comes up with a, you know, a final tree planting plan. I'd have no issue engaging the tree committee earlier on in this process. I mean, we've already worked with Jen Cybert and Philip to inventory the existing trees. But perhaps on this project, what we need to do is be a little more proactive with the final landscaping plan ahead of construction so that folks know and have some opportunity to comment on, you know, what types of trees would be planted when we're done. So I think we can definitely work on, on that level of activity with this project. I know that, for example, um, you know, in front of Mark Nydig's property, Mark spoke earlier on and he has some fairly dense lilac bushes that, that screen his property. You know, some of those, we may have an opportunity to relocate. They're in the right of way, but there's no reason that we couldn't at least try and relocate them further to the north onto his property to, to continue that screening. And, you know, if that's not feasible, then, you know, lilacs can be planted and they are rather fast growing. So, um, you know, I think we can kind of tailor the landscape plan to, hopefully to each individual property to sort of recoup the, you know, the canopy that we're losing. But yeah, there's no question, I mean, you can't, we're not going to relocate, you know, a 50-year-old willow tree or an 80-year-old willow tree. And we're not going to expect the canopy of an 80-year-old willow tree to, you know, miraculously reemerge in five years. So it's, it's going to be a change.
No, I guess my, my feeling is, is much like the, one of the other problems that we have coming up later in the, in the meeting, which is the, the town pump site. I mean, they screwed up and what we're going to require of them effectively to, to help mitigate the damage that they did was to actually create a more dense forest ultimately than they otherwise would have been there to provide the screening that we otherwise were going to get. And we may get more as a result of this. My thought is that particularly on this kind of a reconstruction project where we have these kinds of screening foliage that we ought to look at just on an ongoing basis. Okay, what do we do to effectively mitigate the impacts of this, this reconstruction on the properties that are most affected? And I think that by incorporating what I'll call some enhanced or a commitment to a little bit more of an enhanced landscaping plan, you'd probably get a little more buy-in from a lot of those property owners that feel very impacted by this. And so I'd like to see us do that, not just on this project, but on others as well. I think it would be a very helpful thing. So anyway, that's, that's all I got. Thanks. Thanks.
Thank you, Frank. Counselor Davis.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any questions. I, um, I've already picked the brain of Craig and Brandon quite a bit on this and I really appreciate that. I just would though, um, make supporting comments to extend what Frank has said. I mean, I, I think in both cases, I, I agree wholeheartedly with him that, number one, if the residents to the east of Texas would like a sidewalk and are willing to sacrifice their trees to do it, I, I think this would be a very good time to accommodate that because who knows when we ever do anything else going east if we're not going to do it now. And then the second thing, yeah, I also agree about the landscaping. I mean, I think that, um, you know, standard street trees are really, maybe not replacements for what's there. And, and I think to keep the character of the area and given the proximity to the train and everything else, I think that engaging to make sure we've got the right landscaping, I think, would be a really good idea. And so I support what Frank just said and it's something I would, I would think about. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. And finally, Ryan's back with us. Counselor Henon, any questions for staff or comments?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ryan. So Craig, if I'm not mistaken, do you have anything to follow up with, Craig?
No, I mean, I think I'm, I'm hearing pretty loud, can you guys hear me now? I'm switching microphones. All right.
Yes.
Still not sure what's going on with my camera, so sorry about that. But, uh, you know, I'm hearing pretty loud and clear that, um, let's, let's look at extending the sidewalk to the eastern city limits. We'll definitely work on, um, you know, some enhanced vegetation or, you know, some type of bioswale improvements to the west of Wisconsin on this project. Are we comfortable? I don't know if, if council wants to make them, typically I don't really look for a motion at this stage of the project. But, um, you know, I, are we good with the sidewalk on the north side of the project? And we can look at whatever trees can be saved as possible and try and engage the tree committee earlier on to perhaps come up with a landscape plan that we can look at, at the final authorization to bid, which would be in about two months? I guess that would be my suggestion. I think maybe I could work with Maria and Jen and Philip and get the tree committee going earlier on, on this project than, than normal and perhaps have some recommendations for council when we go to bid the project here in, in May.
I think that's a good, good approach. If I'm reading the tea leaves this evening, I would imagine that the council is probably supportive of seeing the north side bike trail, excuse me, sidewalk be installed as part of this project and extended possibly to the county line. But it would be nice to have a little bit more information addressing some of the concerns that we heard tonight from the council as well as the public regarding screening and additional landscaping elements that could help mitigate the impact of that tree removal. Is that a good synthesis of the discussion council tonight? Or you have anything further to add? I think my recommendation to you tonight would just be to authorize Craig to proceed with the design of Edgewood Place, understanding that we'll have additional information presented to address those concerns at a later date.
Mr. Mayor, I would so move. I would move to respectfully request and to authorize Craig to proceed with design on Edgewood Place based on recommendations presented in the report and the discussion this evening regarding sidewalks, bioswells and the, and the enhanced landscaping.
Thank you, Frank. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor. Now further discussion on the motion? Michelle, roll call, please.
Counselor Cornell?
Aye.
Counselor Sweeney?
In favor.
Counselor Davis?
Aye.
Counselor Henon?
Aye.
Counselor Fury?
In favor.
And Counselor Norton?
Favor.
Thank you. And John, I muted you, I'm sorry.
And that motion carries unanimously, Craig. Thanks for the detailed staff report. I'd also like to thank the residents along Edgewood that showed up tonight to voice their public comment. Very much appreciated. And Brandon, thanks for attending on behalf of RPA. With that said, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a consideration of the MOU with Montana Commerce LLC, also doing business as Town Pump. And I will turn it to Angie for her staff report. Thanks, Angie.
Great, thanks. Good evening again, Mayor and council members. So just to give you guys a brief history that I'm sure you're all too aware of. You, uh, Town Pump to construct a gas station and convenience store at the intersection of Highway 40 and Highway 93 South. Per the conditions that you imposed on that CUP where that they preserved the mature trees that are on both Highway 40 and 93. Those, I think you guys will recall that representatives of Town Pump and others attended a meeting, oh geez, maybe in December, and issued a letter of apology explaining that there's a contractor had cut down the trees without their permission. So we lost eight mature trees as a result of that. There's three that our arborists and foresters have looked at and decided were damaged enough to the point where they needed to be removed. At the council meeting, they offered to, Town Pump offered to replace the 11 trees that either were completely taken out or damaged to the point where they're no longer viable with twelve trees. You folks had asked that they restore them at a two-to-one basis, which would be 22 trees. They were agreeable to that. And after that happened, we entered into negotiations with them for an MOU for the tree replacement. During the course of that, Town Pump was really easy to work with. They agreed to the two-to-one ratio, although our folks from They agreed to the two-to-one ratio, although our folks from Parks and Rec had some concerns that maybe replacing them at that density and the locations where they were firmly located wouldn't necessarily be best for the trees. You folks also wanted them to replace them with 20-foot trees, and since then, it's become, come to our attention, not only from information we received from Town Pump's arborist, but from our arborist and forester, that 20-foot trees aren't really necessarily available, not only in the Flathead, but really kind of anywhere. Their arborists checked with nurseries, I think, two within Montana, maybe two within other states, and just 20-foot trees really just aren't available. The cost to transport those trees is going to be pretty huge. The carbon footprint to transport 20-foot trees is going to be pretty huge, and our forester and arborists have told us that, you know, 20-foot trees aren't necessarily going to take. So the MOU that you have in front of us basically allows that Town Pump can produce them, the trees, at a two-to-one ratio, if it's viable, according to our arborist and forester, and basically heights and sizes that are determined to be most viable by our arborist and forester. They are going to replace them in a two-to-one ratio, again, if it's viable, because there's only so much space in that site. The location and timing will be supervised again by our staff. They will hire an arborist to oversee the planting as we will oversee the planting and to basically care for the trees and certify them. We will have well checks on the trees for five years after they're planted and provides that they will do a yearly check on them, make sure they're watered, make sure that they're viable. So we can't replace the trees, but it seems to be the best solution that we can at least mitigate some of the damage that was caused. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Angie. Any questions for Angie on the matter between Montana Commerce and the city of Whitefish? We'll start with Rebecca. Any questions, comments, Rebecca?
Yep, I have several. Is the arborist online? Like, is the arborist available that they have hired to speak to?
There is a, there's a letter provided by the arborist, Rebecca. I don't know. I don't know if, yeah, I'm not sure if he's online. I know it's actually an arborist that the city's used, so it's a reputable arborist.
Yeah, I read, I read what he had written, but I had some other questions about the costs of how they had guestimated this. And then the second thing is I'd like to add, under 10, another condition that we ask for a $12,000 fee to be provided to the city of Whitefish, which shall be used by the Parks and Recreation or Public Works Departments to use on future projects to help remediate the loss of a mature forest of 100 to 200-year-old trees with significant canopy and which now impacts our long-term goals for climate cooling within the city. And so I think, what I have trouble with this, I think you did a great job on writing it, Angie. It's just that to actually replace these trees is impossible, and it also impacts our, the cooling in our city, but also our potential for urban forestry goals otherwise, too. So I think there should be a financial differential between what they're outputting for these really small, really local trees, and what we should get as a city that we could plant other trees elsewhere to help mitigate what they have destroyed against their conditions.
Rebecca, I guess my direction...
Sorry.
My direction on what would be an amendment to this MOU, Rebecca, is if we have a motion on the table to approve this, you can then make a friendly amendment to add condition number 10 to the MOU, if that's okay with you.
Done. Okay, will do.
Any other comments, Rebecca?
I really would have liked to have known what the costs were to bring in trees from outside areas and all of that. The only other concern I have is I'm not sure that three years is long enough for watering since we're going into more warming, and I just wondered if they were going to be doing any landscaping that would include a watering plan and sprinkling system.
Angie, you're muted. Sorry. Part of, you know, part of the requirement is that they provide an updated landscaping plan, and, you know, as far as watering the trees, I guess I'm not a tree expert by any means. Maybe Maria can speak to it a little bit more about the requirements, you know, for sprinkling and such, so. But they will be providing an updated landscaping plan that has to be approved by the city.
Yeah, just to add to that, irrigation systems are not adequate watering systems for new tree growth. So these trees will have tree bags on them for three years and will be watered in that manner, which is the system in which we use to water our trees in any Boulevard area. They'll also be monitored by an arborist annually, so if more care is needed, more watering is needed, that will need to be tended to because their arborist is supposed to be monitoring for the health and success of the trees.
Thank you, Maria.
Rebecca, I'd also add that, and again, Maria can correct me if I'm wrong, that, you know, we did look at the availability of 20-foot trees, both locally, and, you know, I don't know that we went out of state and looked at it, but I think there was maybe like two or three of them available, and that's, you know, it's the cost of freighting them up and the fact that they might fail just seems to be kind of counterproductive to what we're trying to do.
And Angie, I think that's pretty clear in the letter that when they reached out to us and were concerned about the MOU as drafted, it was because the availability, not particularly the cost, but could they find a decent-looking 20-foot tree and ensure viability of that making it all the way from Washington or Oregon all the way to Montana because of the highways that it has to travel? So I think that, you know, it was more not about cost, Rebecca, but more about the viability of the trees and even be able to find a decent-looking tree that could be procured at that number of trees.
Rebecca, further comments?
No, I just, I think it sets a bad precedent for us not to have fines when things like this happen. What they're doing is, sounds appropriate, but it will not be replacing what they took. So that's why I think there should be more mitigation for the city, and I'll bring that up when I make the motion.
Okay, thanks very much. It was brought to my attention, my camera stopped working. I think it's just the internet connection this evening, so I apologize. But regardless, Counselor Fury, any comments or questions this evening?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Andy. Counselor Quinell?
Yeah, thank you, John. Yeah, I have a couple questions. There's nothing in the MOU, Angie, that says anything about if, you know, even if they're doing what they're supposed to be doing and the trees die, there's nothing that says they need to replace them? Is that understood, or do we need to add that?
It's actually not a bad idea to add, Steve. I'm not at all opposed to adding that.
Okay.
I think we're going to have to set some, you know, some timeframes on that, so, you know, maybe if they're not viable, and again, Maria, you're the tree expert, interrupt me, three years, five years, they die, then they need to replace them. I'm not at all opposed to that. I think this is a good idea.
Okay. It seems like if they're monitoring them for five years by a certified arborist, that might be the timeframe. I wouldn't be opposed to going beyond that, possibly.
Sure.
The other...
I think that's a really good idea, Steve.
Okay, thank you. I had one good idea tonight. Yay!
More than I had today, honestly.
The other, the other thing I want to say is I do think it's appropriate that we get these trees locally because they're going to have the best chance to survive, find the biggest trees locally, especially if they're grown here in northwest Montana. It's just the chance of them surviving is going to be much better. We're going to get a better tree and a better result. So I think that makes the most sense. And then I also just want to preemptively put out there that if we're talking about fines, we got to address that by ordinance and not on a case-by-case basis. We need, if we have to have a fine, then we need to address it in our CUP ordinance rather than doing it on a case-by-case basis. I just think that's preempting that conversation.
Yeah, no, Steve, I agree with you, and that's something that staff has, you know, definitely after this, you know, it's on our radar, is to address having a monetary fine for, you know, violations of conditions of CUP. We do have a tree ordinance in effect that it's really public trees, not private trees that aren't subject to CUP, but it is on staff's radar to take a look at doing a fee for a violation of the CUP, so.
And Angie, but one of the, just to add real quick, that, you know, when we look at a tree preservation plan and getting that into our code, that's going to be a really important part of how we look at enforcing that tree preservation plan as my landscaping.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the problem with, you know, doing a civil fine from a city standpoint is we're really capped by state law, whereas, you know, with public trees, we're not because it's actually like a criminal fine, not a civil fine. So we're definitely going to need to navigate our way through that because I'm not quite certain how much we can do civilly when we're capped by state law.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Steve. Counselor Davis?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Counselor Sweeney?
Yeah, Angie, the thing that I, I like Steve's idea of adding a guarantee effectively that they replace anything that doesn't survive at least the five years that they have to monitor them. But the other is that it occurs to me that there is nothing in here that I saw that requires them to plant these trees in what I call a timely fashion. And I would like to understand, it seems to me that given what they have done and given their obligation to do these things, that at the very least, they should be required to replace these things as soon as possible, but in no event will they be issued a certificate of occupancy for completion to open or facilitate or the use of that facility. Those trees are replaced. Does that make, does that make sense? And I noticed, I think you and I talked about that, but that's the one thing I saw that I think is really important to get in here.
Yeah, no, and I get that, Frank, and I think there's a provision in there that basically says that they're going to coordinate with our, with our staff for when is most appropriate to plant them. We don't want to plant them too early. We don't want to plant them too late. So I do think that there's a provision in there that requires them to coordinate with us as to when is the most appropriate time to plant. So, I mean, if, you know, if they get done, and I have no idea, I've been there, either, like, maybe once, respect to certificate of occupancy, but, I mean, I think the last thing in the world we want is for them to buy all these trees, plant them, and have them die just because they haven't coordinated with their staff on when's the most appropriate time to plant them.
No, and I quite agree, and that was kind of my concern here, and I don't know whether, at the same time, if I don't want to hear a noise that this thing is, well, we're going to open the facility in June or May 1, and we're not going to plant these trees or replace these trees until August 2022. I mean, that's not working for me. And so I'd like to have a better understanding or commitment.
Sure. And Frank, maybe what we could do is build in that they will coordinate with their staff, and it will be within this year, because, I mean, I, again, I'm not a tree person. I don't know anything about trees. I don't know when's most appropriate to plant them, but I think we can put bookends on that as well.
Don't they have to have a new landscaping plan done before that goes through council first? So...
Well, it actually won't go through council, but it does have to be approved by staff, so. And, you know, the kind of the purpose of the landscaping plan is to see where they're going to put the trees and to make sure that we're doing it in a way that, again, aren't going to make these trees fail, that we're not, they're not going to be crowded, they're not going to make these trees fail, they're going to provide the screening that is appropriate, but again, making sure that the trees are viable.
Thanks, Angie. And Counselor Davis? I already went to you, sorry. Counselor Hannon?
Nothing for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion in consideration of the MOU between Montana Commerce LLC and the city of Whitefish, and if there's amendments, we can make those following if we do get a second.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the MOU with Town Pump or our friends with Town Pump, I guess it is.
Montana Commerce LLC.
Yeah, Montana Commerce LLC.
Is there a second motion?
Second.
Second by Counselor Quinell. Rebecca, I'll start with you. I think you heard from, based on Steve's comments, I believe Angie responded at the appropriate place to address punitive damages would be via ordinance through our conditional use permit process or other. Would you still like to put your motion out there as a friendly amendment to add condition 10?
Yeah, I would really like to do that, but obviously it will not pass, so I won't waste our time. But I think it would be a really nice gesture for Town Pump to maybe donate money for trees, if that would be something they would consider, since the cost to replace the trees is so much less than what we, what we lost, and they failed to meet their conditions. And the town is still really upset about this. And so I think if they wanted to donate a certain amount to, you know, our tree committee or Parks and Rec to compensate for what they don't have to spend money on, that would be a nice gesture.
Thanks, Rebecca. Steve?
Yeah, I'd like to add a condition, or I don't know if it's called a condition or an agreement, number 10, or somewhere in there that says that Montana Commerce shall replace any trees that die or that are deemed no longer viable while they are being monitored in that five-year period, along those lines. Is that good enough, Angie, for you to...
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we'll have a friendly amendment to add condition number 10, that any trees replaced that are no longer deemed viable within the five-year period shall be replaced at the expense of Montana Commerce. Did I articulate your desire there, Steve?
I think so. The only other thing I would, I'd like, you know, the clock to start over on five years if that, you know, if one tree dies in year three, then that tree start, that time starts over at five years from that point that they have to keep. That makes sense.
That was the understanding of the second, Frank?
Yes, that's a understanding, and I like it.
Okay, I do. Thanks, Angie.
Yep, you bet. No problem.
That'll be friendly amendment to add condition number 10. We'll vote on the friendly amendment before the original motion to approve the MOU. All those, I'll go to Michelle for a roll call. Again, this is for Steve's friendly amendments. Michelle?
Counselor Quinell?
Aye.
Counselor Sweeney?
Aye.
Counselor Davis?
In favor.
Counselor Hannon?
Counselor Henan?
Aye.
Counselor Fury?
In favor.
And Counselor Norton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. And that friendly amendment passes unanimously, which brings us back to the original motion to approve the MOU between Montana Commerce LLC and the City of Whitefish with added condition number 10. Further comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to follow back up with Angie on my question in terms of, are we comfortable with? Or do you need a motion from me to amend the agreement to require that those trees planted in a timely manner and as soon as practical are directed by the Parks Department? Do we need that in there?
Uh, yeah, Frank, if you would do that, I'd appreciate it. And I just think as soon as practical is deemed by the Parks Department would be probably the most appropriate language, if you don't mind.
Mr. Mayor, I would add an additional amendment to the to this provision where Angie would like to stick it, I don't care what number, that the trees shall be planted in a timely fashion as early as practical as directed by the Parks Department.
Thank you, Frank. Is there a second to the friendly amendment?
I'll second it.
That was seconded by Counselor Quinell. We'll vote on Frank's friendly amendment now. Michelle, roll call, please.
Counselor Quinell?
Aye.
Counselor Sweeney?
In favor.
Counselor Davis?
Aye.
Counselor Henan?
Aye.
Counselor Fury?
In favor.
And Counselor Norton? Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. And that does pass unanimously. Angie, we'll just ask that you place that language where you feel it's most appropriate within the document. Counselor, there are further friendly amendments tonight before we vote on the original motion.
Just one quick comment, Mr. Mayor. I do like Rebecca's thought of being punitive in some way, shape or form. I do have to agree that it would be arbitrary at best were we to try and do that. But that said, I would still like to do it if we could, but I know we can't. But thank you for bringing that up, Rebecca. I think it's a great idea. And I do encourage us to find some way to seek that out through our civil process in the future via ordinance.
Thanks, Andy. Michelle, roll call, please.
Counselor Quinell?
Aye.
Counselor Sweeney?
In favor.
Counselor Davis?
In favor.
Counselor Henan?
Aye.
Counselor Fury?
In favor.
And Counselor Norton? Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. And that motion does carry unanimously. Thank you, Angie and Dana, for that matter, for working with Montana Commerce on this MOU.
I will say that there is a huge city attorney, so apparently I'm trying to throw my work off on Dana at this point, so I apologize.
Right, right. Thanks, Ange. We'll move to our last item on the agenda before we take counselor comments. And Dana, I'll turn it over to you for your city manager's report.
Thanks, John. There may report, and maybe I can just read it if you guys have it up in front of you. One of the areas that we need to address moving forward due to the pandemic is our approach on remote meetings. Our current ordinance will expire March 21st. And so we need to consider if staff should be preparing a new ordinance or what you might want that to look like. So I'd like some feedback from the council, a direction for us to, how to move forward. So there's really three options that we have. The first is to let the emergency ordinance expire and we will all return to in-person meetings. We could follow social distancing guidelines. Obviously, face coverings are required. Except that we do need to provide an accommodation for those that have a ADA requirement for not wearing a face covering. The other option is for us to draft an ordinance, an emergency ordinance, very similar to the one that we have right now, that would make this effective for an additional 90 days after March 21st. And in doing so, the council could repeal that at any time if needed. And then I did look into the option of having benchmarks because I know those are used frequently in other areas. Unfortunately, what I'm finding is that the data that we would need to have to determine if we've met a benchmark is really slow in coming out online. The county isn't updating their website. The the health department isn't updating their website nearly as frequently as they used to for data related to positivity rates or the daily number, the average daily rate of new cases per 100,000. You could look at vaccinations, but again, tier 1C is a ways out. I know that tier 1B that we're in right now, you're looking at a, you know, a few more weeks, months, probably on the month side is my guess. And then we go into tier 1C, which is going to be a lot longer period because there's so many more individuals that meet that category. Tier 1C is when city employees, essential employees or frontline workers would be eligible. At that point, I would assume the council is also eligible in that you have to be able to make decisions. So we could return to in-person meetings. However, my recommendation was, would be at this point that we continue the 90-day period. But it is completely up to the council. We've we've talked about a hybrid approach. We think that that's going to be really challenging to manage public comments. It would require an increased investment in our, what we utilize today and making sure that we have that opportunity. But just some direction from council would be appreciated on that. I will also just give you a quick update from the legislature because I report this last week and things change so fast. The inclusionary zoning bill HB 259 passed the House today and has been transmitted to the Senate. That is the one that would prohibit our legacy homes program. House Bill 257, which is the one that would eliminate our enforcement of face coverings, that was sent to the House from the committee. And it is on second, the second reading will occur tomorrow. And then at this point, the only other one, the resort tax population cap increase, which we didn't provide comment on, but was being carried by Representative Fern. That did, that was table, actually, I think it was more than table. I think that it died in the House. It was pretty much a dead bill at this point. And then the House Bill 102, which is interesting, I didn't include this in my report. This is a gun law bill. That one has passed the Senate and House. And it would prohibit cities from regulating concealed carry or open carry except for when you're in a public building or if you're discharging a weapon. So no discharge weapons in city limits is still allowed. So that one is at the governor's level, so that will likely be, I'm going to assume that it'll be signed into law. So I think those are the updates, but if I could just have some direction on remote meetings moving forward, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I believe your recommendation, Dana, would be to continue with and extend the 90-day emergency ordinance. And then if we, I mean, we can always retract that at our discretion. So I don't see the harm in taking that option or pursuing that option, I should say.
Yep, that would, I mean, I think the option is probably the, it's the easiest of all of them to continue how we've been operating, knowing that a large number of individuals have not been vaccinated yet.
Yeah, and I I'll just say that I favor that option, number one, because it's the simplest for staff to manage. It's the lowest cost. And quite frankly, people are still, people don't want to come to meetings. And we've provided a forum for which they can participate in their local government remotely and and stay safe. And I think that we owe it to the people in this community to be able to have access to their government and public meetings. And I think this is the best forum to provide that rather than requiring people to come to City Hall. So that would be my recommendation. And again, with any emergency ordinance, we can always, you know, repeal or terminate that ordinance before the 90-day period if conditions change and as benchmarks indicate so. So that's, that's my recommendation to the council, but it's, of course, your decision. And I'll entertain comments or direction from you.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would endorse your idea wholeheartedly. I think that's the best, best we could do for everybody's health and safety. And one of the reasons that I've always, the only thing I like about, I'll say, the remote meetings is that it does give people who are otherwise, might not be able to participate by coming to City Hall or they're uncomfortable, is it does give them that opportunity to participate. And I think that's an important thing to maintain.
Agreed. Further comments from the council or I just would?
Well, yeah, I'd like to just chime in. I agree with what you're saying, Frank. And I think it's also something to keep in mind as we move forward with or without COVID that, you know, we've struck on something that increases participation in our government. And I think we should, looking at how we can incorporate that into our regular structure somehow. With that said, I, I would like us to get back to regular meetings as soon as possible. I think it's safe if we require people to wear masks. We've proven in schools that we can keep schools open and really limit the transmission of COVID by requiring masks and cleaning up after ourselves frequently. So with, you know, I think that, I think it's doable to get back to regular meetings sooner than later. I do feel like we would cut off a certain amount of public comment for those who don't, who don't feel comfortable coming out and coming out to a public place during this time. So I get it. I also, I think it's doable to do it safe. And I also think we should just continue the way we are. So if that makes any sense at all, thank you.
It does. Thanks, Steve. I couldn't agree more. I'm eager to get back to regular business as well. This is getting a bit old, but we'll deal with it. Further comments from the other council members? Thanks very much. Rebecca?
Um, I just wanted to say that I, one of my neighbors told me that there's about 30,000 people in the 1B category. And we have between 1,000 to 1,500 vaccinations done per week. So it could take a while to get to the 1C category at this rate until we get more vaccines available. I did get both of my Moderna vaccines done, so I feel a lot of relief after working in healthcare. I was eligible for that. But I I still think it's going to be a while before a lot of people have accessed the vaccine. So I agree with you and Dana that it's probably safer. But those of us who do feel okay about showing up, we could do maybe a hybrid. Where the people that want to stay home can stay home and the people that want to go into City Hall could. And just, I also want to say thank you to the Collins family for the for the 672 acres of conservancy around Whitefish Lake, which was a phenomenal gift to the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. Any other comments from the council on our standing COVID item? I have a question, just out of curiosity. Who the heck is sponsoring House Bill 257?
That's a good question. Um, I don't know off the top of my head. I can look real quick.
Okay, I'll let, I'll let you look and we'll, we'll continue on here, Dana. Thanks very much for your, your staff report this evening. And we'll go to counselor comments and we'll start with Rebecca.
I think I just summarized everything. I, I think most people are, what I'm hearing from the people that have been able to get vaccines is they're just utterly relieved and the, have to give a great shout out to the Flathead City County Health Department, I mean, the Health Board. The, it's very efficiently run. People are asking me quite a bit about how they get signed up to get a vaccine. And so there's an online form that you fill out. And you can find that under the Flathead City County Health, Health Board. But the, in the department, but on there, there's a one criteria that you can fill out that has extenuating circumstances, like you might be caring for someone that's immune compromised. Or you might be a teacher or something. So people are supposed to fill out that in detail so that if they can be bumped up, they might be able to in the tiers. And then you can also call to put your name on the list as well. And so I'm glad that more people are feeling comfortable with the vaccines because they seemed they were rolled out quickly, but actually it wasn't the the technology as much, the messenger RNA as much as the production capacity. So for those people that feel comfortable, it's one way that we can stop the spread of the virus quit more quickly. And not much else. I just thank you all for, you know, putting up with me when I get fiery. Okay.
Thanks, Rebecca. Appreciate everything that you do. Andy, comments tonight?
Um, just, I probably had a lot, but only just a couple. Ben Davis, thank you for taking the time to testify at the committee for House Bill 259. To Representative Vinton, for all of the people in this community whose hopes of having a home here that couldn't afford one, given the present market situation and had some hopes given our legacy housing program, shame on you. I will give you at least the credit for having the transparency to say it's simply about builder profits. You didn't mask that at all. But you know what? You don't know what you're talking about, Representative Vinton. I'm pretty much assured that you didn't take any time to read our affordable housing program. I really apologize to the thousands of volunteer hours of everyone in this community that worked hard for a couple of years to make this happen. Only so one ideologue from a community that doesn't share a similar problem is able to shoot that down. I hope everyone in Billings remembers that and I hope to God she doesn't get reelected again. Thank you.
Well said, Andy. Thank you. Counselor Quinell?
Uh, thanks, John. I just, I'll be, in the interest of openness, I did do an interview with Chad Sokol with the Daily Interlake today about House Bill 257, about the mask ordinance. I made it clear I was representing my own views, not the, not the views of council. And I don't, I don't know what he'll, what he'll put in there of what I said, but it was, I was pretty direct, kind of like Andy just was about House Bill 259. And I did talk a little bit about that as well with, with Chad. So we'll see what, what gets printed. And with that said, I just want to, you know, appreciate the courage of all of you on council here and staff for working with us and working with our community to, to do what's right by the people of this community, no matter what the people around us think about what their ideologies are in respect to what rights we have and don't have as individuals and as elected officials to, to make things right by the people that live in our community. So thanks for that courage to stand up and be the ones on the front lines of that. So I really appreciate all of you, all of us in the work that we do. And just also a shout out to the Collinses for, for making that huge donation to, to our community along the lake. Hopefully, we'll be able to have another public access point in that area at some point. Be nice. Anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Counselor Sweeney?
I, it's hard to add to what Andy had to say earlier about that House bill. I have very similar feelings about the bill that is, I guess, been reported out that would restrict our ability as a local community to identify what the health and safety needs of our community are and act on those. I find that offensive in, in every way I can think of. How dare they? And then the last is, I too want to thank the Collinses for, for their the, the Collinses for, for their commitment and what they've done for this community, not just in this, not just in this, this donation effectively, or this conservation easement, but they've spent most of their lives active and really in support of this community. And they should be thanked for that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Frank. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I would take this opportunity as well to express my extreme frustration at what's coming out of the state legislature, specifically with these two bills, House 259 and 257. You know, Whitefish is a community that is different from a lot of other communities in Whitefish, and, or excuse me, in the state. You know, we have a high visitation. We have high real estate prices. And, you know, the fact that the state legislature willing to let the citizens of the communities make decisions that are correct for them, that might not be correct in other cities, is just absolutely infuriating. And so, you know, I think that we, unfortunately, are going to need to prepare ourselves for both of these bills likely being passed. As it relates to Bill 259, I think there's some conversations we may need to have about how that affects our zoning that we have in place and what that means for us. So I would imagine we'll have those conversations soon. I cannot express my displeasure and my unhappiness about this anymore. I think it's just absurd that they would do this. So.
I think we may have lost Ben. You there, Ben? Well, we got the gist of it at least. We'll move on to Counselor Hannon. Sorry, Ben. Ryan, any comments tonight?
Uh, nothing really in particular. But I will say, I, I agree with Andy 100%. I think he hit it right on the head. There's not much more I can say about that, but I'm, I'm in agreement with, with that.
And so am I, and I won't repeat it because I can't state it better myself, but total agreement as well with the comments that were shared this evening. And I have nothing further to add at this point. Dana, anything further from staff?
Not this evening, John. Thank you.
Thanks, Dana. On that note, we are adjourned, and we'll see you back here in a couple weeks. Be safe. Take care.